Start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Alterations to the agenda? I have one board that would like to move, let's see, 3C up to under 3A and make 3B, 3C, please. So we'd like to do the Model Marvels and then the recognition of board members and then the special education individualized educational plan. Some move. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, hearing none? Thank you, board. Any other alterations to the agenda? Hearing none?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is this where I would correct the language or you want me to correct the language for I in 7A when we get to it?
When we get to it, please. Thank you. All right, presentations, Model Marvels, and we'll start off with Mr. Kleinfeldt.
Come on up, Steve from Mohegan. He's absolutely loving this. Heard about it all day at school. But anyway, Steve came to us a couple of years ago as our SO. But he's more than just a protector of our school. He's a constant source of kindness, reassurance, and positivity for our students, staff, and families. His presence makes everyone feel safe, supported, and valued. Steve constantly goes the extra mile, helping anyone whenever he can. So on behalf of all of us at Mohegan, congratulations, Steve, on your model.
I see him every morning, I didn't know who he was.
Murphy School, please.
I'd like to call up three young ladies, Savannah Ryan, Charlie Vieira, and Sylvie Margiata. The theme of my awards tonight is definitely kindness and acceptance, okay? I'm gonna start with Savannah and Charlie, who are nominated by their classroom teacher. Savannah and Charlie have been role models for inclusivity. They demonstrate empathy, patience, and respect for classmates of all abilities. In PE and recess, they go out of their way to make sure all students can participate and feel included. They both treat all classmates as equals and provide assistance when appropriate, whether that be quietly reminding of instructions, helping others find the page, or picking things up off the floor. So for that, I present these two. And Ms. Sylvie. I have two nominations for Ms. Sylvie, and they both came on the same day within about five minutes of each other, saying almost exactly the same things. Sylvie would make a great Marvel. She is above and beyond kind and helpful to students who may need support in my classroom. From the art teacher, Ms. Grant, she said, "You are kind, positive, and encouraging to her peers. She especially builds up special needs peers in the art classroom with her admiration of their artwork. These friends seek out Sylvie's praise and support, which she provides consistently and wholeheartedly. It is a beautiful thing to see." So, nice job, Sylvie. Congratulations.
Oakdale Almetter, please.
So I'm gonna start by reading a quick one that I received from Brigham's biggest cheerleader, one of Brigham's biggest cheerleaders, his grandfather, who I've known for a very long time. He emailed and said, "I'd like to nominate Brigham Novak for a 4th grade student at Oakdale for the Model Marvel recognition. As Read to Ride incentive program begins, I'm reminded of the contributions Brigham has made to his community. Brigham has been an enthusiastic participant in this program throughout his elementary school journey, even winning the bicycle prize two years in a row. However, rather than accepting the bikes for himself, he selflessly asked the principal to give them to fellow students in need. This profound act of kindness at such a young age reflects Brigham's character. Now that Read to Ride has started up again, he is more than excited as ever to participate," which your teacher said, "You're like in it to win it every week, right?" She says, "No wonder he's won so much, because he is always reading every week. And he is such a good example, and he leads with integrity and kindness. And since I knew his grandfather so well, I emailed him back and I said, 'Charlie,'" I'm like, "This is the best nomination ever, and I am so mad at myself that I didn't think of it on my own." So I completely agree with your grandpa that you are more than deserving of this award. You are kind, you are generous, and you are a role model for your peers. So congratulations.
Leonard Child, Child Elementary School, please.
Also, Brigham, you are a great dancer, by the way, too. Hobie Valante and Ms. Smith, why don't you come and join us, too? We are very proud to announce Hobie as our Marvel. Hobie's a model student for the past three years academically, and really a great citizen and role model within our building. And he's also just a really accomplished musician, an outstanding trumpet, tuba, and trombone player. He's been recognized around the state for his abilities. He's gonna perform next week on the 25th at the Eastern Regionals. During auditions, he was one of only 10 trombone players in the state auditioning. He received the highest score out of the 10 at the auditions, so will be first chair for that, which is a huge honor in this role. He's been a member of the Montville High School Jazz Band since 7th grade, performing in all of their concerts. He's been, he is a member of the East Line High School Marching Band, just because his talents are so unique and sought after, and he's such a tremendous musician. So, we did make something for you a little bit down in the tech ed room. If you open it up, there is a little trombone in there that you can put on as a trophy. But Hobie, I just wanna recognize you, and I know Ms. Smith is here, too, as our Model Marvel.
Montville High School, please.
I'm gonna start with bringing Kaylee Sales up, please. All right, Kaylee Sales is a senior at Montville High School, and she's in the concert choir. She's been an active member of both the curricular and extracurricular singing ensembles throughout her time at MHS. She approaches her music with, she approaches the music education with dedication and passion, earning her the respect of her peers and the teachers as a leader in the program. This year, Kaylee successfully auditioned and earned her spot as an alto in both the Eastern Connecticut Regional Honor Choir and the Connecticut Allstate Honor Choir. Judges at both events praised her rich vocal tone, impressive sightseeing skills, and advanced ability that requires reading and performing music on the spots. While many students prepare for these auditions with private lessons, Kaylee has achieved this level through her natural talent, hard work, and strong foundation that she has built in Montville High School Music Program. Her dedication and willingness to push herself beyond expectations makes this success even more remarkable. We are incredibly proud of her accomplishments and can't wait to see what she does next. Outside of the music world, Kaylee is an exceptional student and someone I often rely on, looking for student volunteers for events like Back to School Night, Open House. She's always willing to step up and represent Montville High School, and tonight is no exception. You'll have the chance to see her in action, because I called in yet another favor, and she'll be presenting a little bit later in this meeting. This is the reason why you are a Montville Marvel for a month. Okay, I would now like to invite up the members of the Iron Wolf Project. Come on up, there's a lot of us. Okay, this is our school's Culture and Climate Committee. This group is making a lasting impact on our school community. Through their dedication and hard work, they have fostered a more positive, supportive, and inclusive environment for all staff and students. This team's commitment to enhancing the school culture goes beyond the day-to-day responsibilities. They actively seek ways to strengthen connections, promote well-being, and create a space where everyone feels valued. Their efforts are evidence in the initiatives they lead and the energy they bring to Montville High School every day. To date, this team has organized a variety of community-building events that bring people together and enhance schools' spirit. From staff potlucks during PD days, from festive holiday parties, to the Underground Spirit Day, a holiday cookie swap, and the Curriculum Crunch Breakfast to support staff during curriculum writing have made a tangible impact on our school culture. One of the most impactful efforts this group has been able to launch is our PAC Expansion Initiative. Every two months, students and staff are recognized and welcomed into the Iron Wolf PAC, where their contributions are fostering wellness, resilience, and mutual support for students and staff alike. We are proud to recognize the following members of the Iron Wolf Project as Montville Marvels in the month of March. Don't just raise your hand, because I don't think they're in order the way I have them. Vicki Clifford, then we have Gillian Pfeiffer, Nick McEnney, Julie Perry, Nicole Santos, Dawn Schreiber, and not in attendance, Holly Ann Moriarty and Sarah Schoolball. Thank you for everything you do for the school.
JoJo, up, please. So it's my pleasure to introduce JoJo Mahone, a senior, who first came to Montville at the start of his junior year. In JoJo's previous district, he was outplaced at an East Con program. JoJo and his mother advocated that this placement was not appropriate, and that he would be better served at the Palmer Program. I'm really proud to say that JoJo and his mother could not have been more accurate for what JoJo needed. JoJo is a dedicated student, one who's made the honor roll every quarter since he's been in the Montville Public Schools. He's got himself a job and maintained it at the Apple Rehabilitation Facility for over a year. He has used his experience to decide he would like to pursue a career as a nurse, and he also has a 50% role with his paychecks. He takes 50% of his paychecks and puts it into his savings account, and he puts 50% in his wallet, so he has spending money. Here's what one teacher had to say about JoJo. "JoJo is a quality young man who is responsible, dependable, compassionate, and level-headed, great qualities that someday will help make him an outstanding nurse." Another teacher said that despite JoJo having difficult times in his life, he has maintained his focus on his goal of pursuing college and a career in the medical field. He's worked hard in his classes to earn good grades and has participated in indoor track. He also has a goal of getting his driver's license and buying a car. And another teacher said that JoJo is absolutely, is an absolutely amazing student who has great work ethic and is kind. This teacher is confident that after JoJo graduates from Montville, he will be successful in achieving his goals and will continue to do great things. And straight in from the bus garage, last-minute entry for you, because they heard about your Montville Marvel, and they wanted me to share with you that congratulations to JoJo on his Montville Marvel. They are very, very proud of you from the bus garage. All right, so JoJo, you make Palmer a better place, and we are really, really happy to recognize you as a Montville Marvel. Congratulations. So Jen McKenn, started her teaching career here in Montville in the late 2000s, actually at the Palmer Program. Unfortunately, budget cuts forced Jen to find a different teaching position in another school district. At that time, I was completing my O-92 coursework to become an administrator, and at that time I promised Jen that I would find a way to hire her when I had the opportunity. So two years ago, I was able to fulfill that promise to her, and in doing so, I certainly made Palmer and the Montville School District a better place. Here's what a colleague had to say about Jen. "Jen is built to be a special education teacher. She embraces hard work and is always ready to go the extra mile for both of her colleagues and her students." Another colleague said, "Jen is a CTSEs master, a curriculum queen, and a passionate teacher. She is our go-to for just about anything you can think of. She has created a nurturing and inclusive learning environment where every student feels valued and understood. Her ability to go above and beyond, supporting students, guiding fellow staff members, and creating a supportive atmosphere embodies the spirit of what makes her an outstanding educator." And another staff member said, "Jen is not only a great coworker, but is also one of my dearest and best friends, and is the reason I became a teacher. Before I became a teacher myself, I didn't know how much of what she did was just her," and then she says, "her planning, her organizing, her caring, and her advocating. My dream in life was to be a teacher alongside her, and the fact that Montville has made that happen means everything to me. No one deserves, no one does more for students than she does, consistently going above and beyond to make sure staff are doing whatever it takes to support students. She has an innate ability to bring everyone together and develop a culture of positivity and inclusion that is unmatched. No one cheers louder, participates harder, laughs more, or cares as strongly as Jen does." She adds, "Nothing I can do, or nothing I can put into words can adequately describe how much she means to me." I would add that there are no words that can adequately describe how much Jen means to me and to the Palmer Program. So with that, it's our distinct pleasure to recognize you as a Montville Marvel. Congratulations.
Recognition of board members. In March, we celebrate Board of Education Member Appreciation Month. I want to take a moment to express our gratitude to each of you. Your unwavering dedication, countless hours of service, and commitment to the success of our students and schools does not go unnoticed. Decisions you make help shape the future of our community, ensuring that every child has access to quality, rigorous education, and opportunities to thrive. On behalf of our staff, students, and families, thank you for all you do. As a Montville team, I truly believe we are making a difference. On a personal note, I also want to thank you for your support of me as a new superintendent.
This next part's gonna be a little interactive, so can I bring up the Murphy Marvels, please, over to this table back here, and then Kaylee Sales? Please, I gotta use your table.
No, that's fine. Okay, where's yours?
Good evening. Tonight, we want to take a moment to recognize and appreciate the Montville Board of Education. Your vision and leadership guide our schools, shaping graduates who are communicators, information consumers, problem solvers, and independent learners, skills that are essential for navigating complex tasks in an ever-changing world. At Montville, we embrace the Way of the Wolf, where traits like power, leadership, loyalty, determination, and integrity align with our vision of the graduate, fostering empathy, perseverance, inclusivity, and self-awareness in every student. To honor your dedication, students in our computer-aided drafting and design classes have used their technical stills, skills, and creativity to craft a special gift, a nine-piece wooden puzzle. This puzzle is just one example of the type of work our students undertake in these courses, where they apply problem-solving, precision, and innovation to bring their ideas to life. Each piece represents one of you, our Board of Education members, and when assembled, it forms the image of our wolf mascot. Just as every piece is essential to completing the puzzle, each of you plays a vital role in shaping our school community. Like a strong wolf pack, we rely on each other. Your support and guidance give us the opportunities we need to grow and succeed. Just as every piece of this puzzle is essential to completing the whole, each of you plays a vital role in making our school community stronger. On behalf of the Montville Public Schools, thank you for being an essential part of our PAC. I will now ask the Marvels from Murphy Elementary School to pass out your bags. In these bags, you will find your personalized puzzle piece and a special card designed by our elementary school students. Now it's time for the...
I'm Adrian, I will participate as Iluka, Carol, and Tim. Now it's time to put the puzzle together. Please move the table and together assemble the puzzle. If you look on the back of your puzzle piece, every four of them.
Nice. Thank you very much, that's very nice. Thank you very much, that's, it's very nice.
Thank you all very much.
So it's been a special night, and congratulations to Montville Marvels. And now's the time, if you'd like to stay for the rest of our meeting, we'd be glad to have you, otherwise we're gonna get into Montville community business. All right, citizens' comments? I stand corrected. Very much. Right, the special education individualized education plan, please.
Hello, thank you for having me today. I'm Teresa, I'm the Special Education Advisor for the elementary schools. So I was asked to present a little bit about the IDP and PPT process here in Montville. So tonight, the goal of this presentation is to provide an overview of the PPT and IDP process. The information provided is based on information from the State Department of Education. So before we begin, just a quick introduction to special education. The importance of special education is to ensure that all students with disabilities receive a free and appropriate public education. I'm sure you've all heard the expression faith before, and that's where it comes from. What I'll be presenting tonight are both state and federal mandates that we have to follow as part of the special education process, and you'll hear a little bit of IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The key principle that drives us is that every child deserves an equal access to quality education tailored to their individual needs. So, the process we begin with the referral to special education, this is a formalized process. The referral can be made by parents, school team, or teacher, or sometimes for our youngest students, births of three. It can be for any of the following reasons: academic concerns, social-emotional concerns, behavioral challenges. Or if students are in births of three, then we often have a transition meeting, and then we come into PPT to determine if we need to move forward with more evaluations for those students. When a referral is made by the district, the SRBI process has been implemented, so there's a lot of data that comes into that process we can see. So I'm using the words PPT, it means the Planning and Placement Team Meeting. Fortunately, in special education, we use a lot of letters, and it can kind of sound like alphabet soup. We certainly don't mean it to be, so I wanted to break it down, try not to fall back on that. But a PPT is a collaborative team that makes decisions about educational services that a student will require. It includes educators, specialists, administrators, parents, and sometimes even the student. Not so much at the elementary level, although we do sometimes invite students in, but definitely at the middle and high, they start inviting those students into those meetings. So once the referral is made, students go to what we call PPT1, or the first time we're meeting so formally. At that meeting, we invite the classroom teacher, a special education teacher, or related service provider, that could be the school psychologist, teacher language, any concerns that have been brought up by the referral, we would bring in that specialist to help speak at that PPT, and of course, the parent. Now, from this meeting, there could be two outcomes. One, the team could make the recommendation that we move on for further evaluations to determine if the student qualifies for special education, or we may say, based on the data, the student is exactly where we expect them to be, and no evaluations are needed at that time. Now, if at that time we say, "No, we don't need any evaluations at this time," we are always, you know, let parents know that of course, if concerns continue or something comes up, just because we say no at PPT1 doesn't mean that we can never come back to PPT. But it just means at that moment in time, there is no data to support and we'll move forward with evaluations. If we do determine that evaluations are needed, talk about the evaluation process. So, there are several evaluations that we could commission, and each specialist would then make the recommendations based on the concerns that were made. So there might be some educational assessments, some psychological and developmental assessments, speech and language, OT, PT, meaning occupational therapists, or physical therapists. speech and language, OT, PT, meaning occupational therapist or physical therapist. And we may even have some other folks there, depending on what the concerns are with the student. So for example, we might have the BCBA there. We may have the nurse come if there are some medical concerns. It's important to note that each evaluation is done by the person or the professional in that field. So speech and language pathologist is doing the speech and language evaluations. A physical therapist is doing the physical, the PT evaluation. Special education is doing the academics. Now, the next slide I feel is the most important, is the role of parents. I think sometimes in the PPT and IEP process, we don't realize that parents are a critical, critical piece to this process. They are part of every meeting. We need them there. They know the student better than we do. And sometimes they provide insight that we, as a team, didn't realize is going on. So it's important to have parents there to talk to them, to let them know that we're all part of the same team. So after the evaluations are completed, now we can't do any of these evaluations without the parent consent. Even if they verbally say, yes, I think you should do these evaluations, we need to have signed consent. So it's important to know that if a parent says no, they can, of course, say, no, I don't want to do these evaluations. The process stops. We can't move forward, even if the rest of the team says, we think we should move forward with the evaluations. If a parent says no, then we stop the process. Now, a parent, of course, can change their mind. We would come back to PPT. So, excuse me. So at PPT 2, the team reviews all the evaluations. Now, parents have gotten the evaluations ahead of time, prior to the PPT, in order to review what the team is going to be thinking and saying about their child. I always caution parents, and I'll let you know too, that the way we write our reports is very clinical. It can seem kind of cold, but it's all fact-based. It was not really a warm and fuzzy report. It's just, this is how your child performed. This is how they performed in comparison to other peers their age. So each of the specialists will report out on that. Now, the team then reviews all the information that's provided. And in order to qualify for an IEP, two things must be true. First, the student must have a disability. And you can see on the right there, those are the disabilities that a student could qualify for. Sorry, I'm in front of you. They could qualify for. So, once we determine, yes, a child has a disability, the second piece of that is they need to have specialized instruction. So a child could have a disability and not qualify for an IEP. And this is often confusing to parents. They think, well, my student has a disability. They should require an IEP. However, a student may be right where we would expect them to be. Just because a child has a disability doesn't necessarily mean they need that specialized instruction. Meaning something that's different than what their peers are getting in a regular curriculum. So, for example, I'm trying to give a good example. We might have a student that has autism. And that student is what we would expect them to be. They're achieving high or on regular or higher. They don't need any specialized instruction. They don't need counseling. They don't need OT. They don't need PT. So we wouldn't provide an IEP to that student. We could always continue to monitor the student if something changes. For example, elementary school, they're doing great. They get to middle or high, and they're struggling. Their grades start to fall. We can always come back to PPT. So I try to tell parents that the IEP and the PPT process, it's supposed to grow with the child. You know, oftentimes I think people think these are documents, illegal documents. We must follow them. But they're supposed to grow with the student. It's a living document, just like the child is a living person. We want to make sure that we are changing the IEP or developing the IEP as the child is developing. Now, once we have made the recommendation that the child is going to qualify for an IEP or Individualized Education Program, it is illegal, as I was saying, by me document. I got ahead of myself. I apologize. And the purpose is to provide a roadmap for that student so that we can help them be successful in the classroom. It is personalized learning, meaning that each child is whether... You could have 10 students that have the bond or eligibility under autism, and all 10 IEPs will be completely different because it is literally tailored-made for each student and their particular needs. Excuse me. Sorry. So who makes an IEP? I was hoping this visual would make it a little clearer. The IEP team, that means everybody who's involved with the student, talks about and is developing the IEP. So anyone who provides services, so OT, PT, SLP, which means speech and language pathologist, the BCBA. There's always the regular teacher is always invited. The parent is always there. And sometimes the student. We do have parents who bring advocates to the PPT, and they are always welcome. You know, I always think that if a parent is bringing a friend or somebody to a PPT, it's to help them understand the process. And I always welcome those folks in. There's always a district representative. Usually, that's myself or Amanda that can kind of help if there's a question that comes up. You know, I would like you to provide courseback writing lessons. Is that part of an IEP? So there's somebody there like myself to say, no, that's not part of the IEP. We don't do things like that. The key components of an IEP? We always start with the present levels of performance. And what those are is we take exactly where the student is. What are their strengths? What are their weaknesses? Where do we need to help them fill in the gaps? And we actually write this in the IEP, a present level of performance. From there, we write measurable goals and objectives. So you can see up there, it says SMART goals. That means that they are specific. So specific to the child, what that area needs. So if it is a decoding issue with the student, then you're going to see a decoding goal in there. They are measurable, meaning the student right now is only able to... If it's fluency, is only able to read 15 words per minute. Okay, well, we want to try to get the student up to reading 35 words per minute. And then we also have an end date. We want to try to get that student there. And that's where it's achievable. So we're not going to try to get the kids to go from 15 words a minute to 100 words per minute. We want to make sure that, especially if we look at developmental... Developmental... Sorry. We're looking at students' developmental needs. And for example, a student in kindergarten, we're not going to push him further than we might push a fourth or fifth grader, but we know we can achieve that. Thank you. You're a lifesaver. Realistic goals, and then timely. So every year, we review students' goals and objectives to make sure that we look at past school's objectives, write new goals and objectives moving forward. We are always assessing and progress monitoring students. I did put in transition planning by age 14. So at the elementary school, we don't do this, but when they get to middle and high, by the age of 14, they're preparing for life after high school, including college and career readiness. So what that means is, what are your plans after high school? Are you planning to go to college? How can we support that? Are you planning on working after? Are you going, you know, are you planning to become a trucker? So how can we support that? So that is all inside the IEP. But it gets a little bit... I wish Amanda were here. She could speak a little bit more to that. So ongoing review. So a student's progress in Special Education is closely monitored. You'll see here that the student's progress is monitored three to four times a year. That's three at the elementary and middle school, four at the high school. And that's just to have to do with how report cards are. So, for example, elementary just sent their report cards home last Friday. Progress marks went home for all of our students with IEPs at the elementary school as well. So it's based specifically on the goals and objectives that were written for that student. So each student's progress monitoring with their report cards is individualized to what that child has worked on. And then the special ed teacher, or PT, OT, speech, writes how that student is doing. So for example, if the goal is for them to get to 80% by the end of the year, child is at 60%, the parents would know that very specific progress monitoring. We must meet at least once a year. It's called an annual review. And then every three years, we reevaluate students to determine if they continue to qualify for Special Education. That's what's mandated. Now, having said that, we sometimes have to meet sooner than that. So for example, if a child has... At the elementary school, our students tend to have more services than they do at middle and high. So for example, last week, I had a student who had speech, had PT, had OT, also had specialized instruction. We were able to just dismiss them from speech and PT. And our goal is hopefully in a year, then be able to get them dismissed from OT. And then hopefully, we can work towards maybe that child reducing services. So sometimes we can't always dismiss students from all services, but we are always working to try to diminish the amount of services that they require and always have them in class as much as possible. So in summary, in Connecticut, a student is identified through the IEP process. The structured process begins with recognizing a concern, whether that concern comes from parents or school, followed by a formal referral for evaluation, obtaining parental consent, conducting a comprehensive evaluation, and then holding a PPT needing to determine eligibility. If, I did forget to say this, if we do find a student eligible, a parent can either decline services. They can say that they do not want them, and then we are not able to provide them. We can only provide services with parent consent. Parents have to sign consent for Special Education Services. And then, just like before, if they want to revoke their consent, they can at any time. Questions, concerns?
Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Excellent.
I could speak in front of children? No problem.
No, totally different.
You couldn't tell music group.
I actually have a couple of questions.
Okay, great.
So I kind of look at it as a verification-validation process.
Okay.
You'll get those two things confused. So the verification part is the development of the IEP with the team, correct? But verification processes are usually dictated by some kind of standards. And so I'm making an assumption, you did an excellent job, by the way, that those standards are Connecticut standards that you're molding your verification process to to develop an IEP, correct? So you say a structured process. Is that an actual Connecticut form? Is that a high school form? Is that...
So I think I am understanding your question, but I'm going to answer to what I'm thinking you're asking. And if I don't, please let me clarify.
No, sure.
So, for example, if a student is not reading where we would expect them to be, we would do many assessments to determine. And then that assessment is a standardized assessment, and it's based on other students, the same profile, age, grade. And then we're comparing what the student is able to accomplish and what that standardized test is. We're also looking at the same time, it's never one assessment. What is the student doing in the classroom? So for example, if the student is, you know, not reading or is reading two grade levels behind, we're trying to figure out why. What is, why is that student not reading where we would expect them to be as a fourth grader?
I agree.
Is that what you're asking?
Well, kind of, but like idea, you know, the Individual Disabilities Education Act
Yeah.
in the state, they must have some boilerplate checklist, regulations, policies. I'm making the assumption the school uses them.
So, yes. So for example, students with autism, there is a checklist that we have to go through. And we then, at the PPT 2, we're going through that checklist. And I didn't bring the checklist for you, but there are checklists that we have to go through. And as a team, we have to then say, yes, we all agree to this as a team. For students with dyslexia, same thing. We're going through a checklist to say, you know, it's not, we have to rule out. Oftentimes, we're ruling a lot of things out. It's not that their English is a second language. It's not that they don't have vision or hearing. We are ruling things out all the way through. They didn't get properly proper instructions. So for example, a student who was homeless, who didn't have schooling for the last year, comes to Montville, is reading two years behind, teacher's worried. That's not going to automatically go to a PPT because the child didn't have reading and writing instruction for a whole year. So that's not a disability. That's a lack of instruction.
So once we get the verification process squared away, that's your basic process to develop the validation, is the execution of the process. And our customer, the student, that's how you validate. You validate, is it working for this child? I'm pretty sure I understood that correctly, right?
I think you did, yes.
I'm curious, minimum one meeting a year. I know it's a minimum. I'm curious, does Montville, do you find that you do it as need be, or...
So we definitely meet every year. That's the law.
Yeah, right.
But for some students, we are meeting more often than that, yes. And it depends on the student. It also depends on, so for example, with our preschool students. We might start off that we think that we developed the IEP. Then after the student's with us for three months, we realize, gosh, there's some OT concerns. We call the PPT immediately. We let parents know, we have some concerns about OT. We invite our occupational therapist in. She then asks for evaluations. We then do the evaluations. Then we meet again. So for that student, we might meet three times. So the law, I was trying to go by, just to let you know what the law states. We have to, but we often meet more often than.
No, it's curious because I'm trying to figure out, I think the board's trying to figure out how robust our program is. And it certainly sounds that way. I think you did a really good job in a very succinct manner explaining it to us. Because this is a very serious issue across the country, not just Montville. So I thank you very much. I think you really did a nice job.
Oh, thank you. And just the special ed team here, I just want to say, is amazing. You should all know how amazing the special ed team is. I, you know, I worked with preschool through fifth grade, and I love them all. And they are really top-notch. And I've met some of the middle and high, and I can say the same thing about them. So really, our students are very, very lucky to have them.
Yes, of course.
I don't know, is middle school has the, do they have guidance counselors?
Yep.
They do? So for middle school and high school, if a student loses their guidance counselor and say, I'm having problems, you know, reading or something, can they be their own referral? Or can the guidance counselor be the referral?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. So that would be great, if a kid advocated for themselves. And I would hope that they would also have those conversations with their teachers as well. But from what happens right now, if I, as a student, come to you and you're my guidance counselor and say, look, I am struggling, struggling, struggling. Bill can be a meeting. They won't go immediately to PPT. They're going to figure out what is going on with that student. Because there could be many issues why a child is struggling in school. Maybe they're not sleeping. Maybe there's food insecurity. Maybe, you know, maybe, I don't know, something's happening with a parent issue. So if Bill goes through that and works through that, they're not immediately going to say, go to a PPT.
Okay. I do want to add, so in Connecticut, we have what is called Child's Bind. So at any point in their educational career, if we are nervous or see something outside the norm based on other students' questions about their behavior, attendance, or grades, we are required to go to PPT 1. So prior to that, normally, we would recognize signs and we would get interventions in place. But it should never be that it's May, a student has straight Ds and Fs, they've been suspended many times, and we didn't go to PPT 1 to determine what's going on to help support. That should never happen. You hear of child bind much more often at the elementary level when you notice a disability, a potential disability. You didn't need to say children. I would love to take this opportunity to formally introduce to the board Jill Marukini. Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. You're practicing. She is our interim director of Special Education. And I will tell you, she has literally hit the ground sprinting. I could already share with you that she is an absolute asset to the team. And Andrea and I were just saying, she really feels like she's already a part of the trio here. So I look forward to continuing our work for the rest of the year, and I wanted the board to meet Jill. I should also say, before we move on, Amanda has been instrumental in helping carry us through this bridge to Jill. And, you know, she's just truly an amazing administrator, and she really did a lot of work for us, so I thank her as well. And she's not here, so somebody can come for us.
Any comments, board? Okay. Thank you again. We'll now move on to citizens' comments regarding agenda items only. Any citizens' comments regarding agenda items? Any citizens' comments regarding agenda items? Are we done? Letters and communications?
Don't have any.
Okay. Approval of the consent calendar? Don't move. Yes?
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
I noticed that budget update is on that. And I'm wondering, budget update should be in the whole business? Since budget update is on the agenda, can we include it in business? Because consent calendar just means that we're allowed to, we're missing things all at once. So I don't think it belongs in the, I'd like that moved to for the next month of that.
I agree.
And one more thing.
Yes.
We approve the minutes on the consent calendar. But yet, we never state what minutes we're approving. And they're not in the minutes. So if the public were to read... we're approving, and they're not in the minutes. So if the public were to read the minutes under consent calendar, it says approved, that, so if I was sitting down, go approved, what, what got approved? So I'd like to request that either we make some changes to our agenda format, which we'd like maybe to have another discussion on, or we actually read out what we are approving, the minutes of February 21st and March 3rd, it goes into the record, and I think it should appear in the minutes. That way the public knows that those new minutes were approved, otherwise they don't show it anywhere in our minutes or our agenda.
That's a good question. And I will let Bob answer that, because I asked Bob about this, because I've been following this for a while, and I was curious. So Bob, would you please, I think this is important, all of us understand this. It's a good question.
I've sat on a number of boards, and you're not wrong on them. One of the boards, the minutes would be listed under the consent agenda, which is a cool thing to speed up a meeting. The other thing is that I've sat on boards where we voted on the minutes, and that was always a little personal thing, because it's sort of, because somebody would abstain because they weren't at the meeting. That's not the purpose of an abstention, and as long as you read the minutes, you can vote on them. So I have no problem with, I mean, realistically, I would kick the agenda back to policy and finally get a good review of the agenda, and that would be my suggestion, is to move it to policy, go over the entire agenda, because yes, there are things over time, the I and stuff, you know, the agenda is our document for running the meeting. So I would literally move it to policy, or I'd make a recommendation that the agenda be reviewed in policy, and then brought to the full board.
But for now, if we could just put it in the minutes, what, you know, what they were, what months they were, at least the public would know under that, what we actually did, that would be helpful.
I'm good with that, absolutely. So you would like to move six A under, under seven to seven B?
Well, not necessarily tonight, but maybe next month.
Next meeting, okay.
It just shows up under old business.
Yep. Thank you. We're talking about the approval of the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed, any extensions, hearing none, thank you, board. Budget update. Please.
Just a few things I'd like to mention since we adopted our budget last month. In the last few weeks, there, there's less uncertainty as we get closer to July 1st than we had when we adopted it. Some of the estimated areas are becoming more known, including some of the larger ones. Health insurance, for example, looks like it's going to come in right the way we were expecting it. You know, the health insurance carriers like to wait as long as possible before they provide some rates, and of course, we need to know earlier, but it looks like it's going to come in the way we were advised by our consultant when we put the budget together. So that's, that's good news. And we're seeing some of the prices for energy, particularly heating oil, diesel, gasoline, although they are gyrating on a day-in, day-out basis. They're generally where we thought they would be when we put the budget together, and we're getting ready to hedge those or lock them in to a certain extent. The one liability and property insurance, that's coming in a little higher than we thought it would be, but we've asked the insurers to come in next week, we're going to talk to them, and we need something a little more reasonable. But along those lines, we're also going to have a special discussion on cyber insurance, because that is so important. That's a separate policy, but we want to talk with them face to face about what's, what's included, what's excluded, before we sign off on that. So that, that'll all be happening. And then the other thing, we're meeting with the mayor's office tomorrow to talk further about our, we have a good chance to sit down and explain our budget drivers in a little more depth than we were able to do in a presentation format, answer some of those questions, with the goal that they'll be able to endorse it and recommend it as you adopted it. So a lot's happening, and we're moving ahead towards the end of March. Questions or comments?
John, I think our 2% fund hasn't changed, correct?
That's correct. We, we don't yet have the final audit, the town audit, which will confirm what we think, but there have been no changes to what, what we put in and what we thought was in.
Thank you.
John, was the turf field contract already approved?
You mean for the turf field? It, it was, it was, I think it was the beginning of February, maybe the early January. Work is expected to begin May 20th, weather permitting, and we'll take a couple months.
Any other questions? All right, on to old business. Seven A. Consideration and action, excuse me, to rescind the proposed changes to policy 5131.81. Electronic devices, parentheses, reverting to the original board policy.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'm getting to it. The language under old business is not the same language as it was last month. And agenda items cannot be modified from month to month, they have to be brought forward. And the only way agenda items can be modified is if somebody wants to amend it. So I would, I, I am going to insist that we bring back the old language, which reads, continued discussion regarding proposed changes to cell phone policies. That reflects last month's agenda under old business. At that point, at this point, if somebody wants to amend it, they can. Otherwise, we can move ahead and adopt the policy that came out of the policy committee that was adopted.
I agree with that.
So the, the language that we, we're discussing at the first policy meeting, over, under this particular number...
Before we get there, we need to make sure we get this correct.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we get the actual language correct.
Okay.
That's what you'd like changed, right?
Well, I read that into the record. The, the language should read, continued discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and now he is just, as chair of the policy committee.
And so the, the section that was removed from the cellular phones electronic communication device policy, P 5131.81, read, unless otherwise banned by this policy or by the building principal, all cellular telephones or other wireless communication devices must be powered off and out of sight during the regular school day unless, the supervising teacher grants permission, the use of the devices in, device is provided in the student's individualized education program, or as needed in an emergency that threatens the safety of students, staff, or other individuals. That was, that was removed, so we'd like to make a motion to remove that paragraph. Any discussion on that section?
So is this reverting us back to the policy at the start of the school year, or...
No. This, this was the one that was removed from the policy of the start of the year, that we haven't yet to vote on that.
Did you allow me on this section, on the second section of that policy?
Yes, the second, the set, the session or section, it says, students may possess cellular telephones and other wireless communication devices on school property. The school sponsor and transportation provide students adhere to the restrictions contained in the school handbook. Any unauthorized use of cellular telephones and other wireless communication devices during the instructional school day or at such times as not authorized by the school principal or designee is prohibited, as it disrupts the instructional program or distracts from the educational environment. So it's, it's, they are not, they are not allowed without the principal or designee's permission.
So we feel, policy feels that it does satisfy the needs of the teachers, that would like to use it for instructional purposes, and, and that was a very well, a good point we all, I think most of us thought. But the existing policy already provides for that under that paragraph on the first page. So they already can do that. It's already in our existing policy. Yeah. So can we make a motion or... One discussion, we're just discussing a vote.
Any discussion on this, board? Bonnie?
I, I think that we should discuss whether it is clear with this remove that the, the principal, the teachers are the designee. Is that the way we're understanding it? Principal or designee, so the teachers are the designee that, who are allowed to authorize this.
Well, that's the actual principle.
Ritual notes, teachers, teachers say, you know, that, right, you put it square in the hands of superintendent or staff. They, they use it judiciously in the educational world. That's how, kind of the way I see this.
It's just for instructional purposes.
Right.
They, they give the permission, the authorization.
Yeah, as long as we all understand that, because it seemed like the teachers did not, some of the teachers who wrote us letters didn't understand that it was already
It was already in the policy.
Under this paragraph, which is kind of unfortunate, that we already have it. Okay.
Fine, it's all clear with the board, is it clear, we're all clear on this? Okay. All right, motions on table, it's been seconded, double discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none? Passes, thank you very much, Policy Committee. All right. New business. Consideration and action to designate interim business manager John Spang as authorized signature two dash ED dash zero nine nine agreement for child nutrition program.
Yes, claims for reimbursement are valid only when certified by authorized signers on file with the State Department of Education. So action by the Board of Ed must occur to make changes to authorized signers so that claims can be signed and submitted, and reimbursement delays won't occur. So Bob already signed it, I have it, and it will be forwarded.
All right.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion, yes, we do. I wanted superintendent to explain it to us.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you. Consideration and action to approve a bid waiver for awarding the Greece separator pump project at the Tile Middle School as approved in Cablo Plan to Terry Plon. Superintendent? I'd like you to explain it first, yes, please.
Sure. Kathy Clamero handled this prior to her leaving. This vendor provided the lower price among the two proposals received and had positive references during the vetting process. The project was publicly advertised, however, no formal bids were submitted at that time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second, please, all right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Hearing none, thank you. Discussion on possible action to set Montville High School graduation date.
We would like to set the date for Montville High School graduation as Friday, June 13th, due to the turf field being under construction, if you will. The graduation will be held at Dodg Stadium. In the unfortunate event that it does rain, graduation ceremony will take, take place in the auditorium at the high school.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Let's make sure that, we don't have to let Parkson like, remember last year, they just don't worry. No, we do not.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you. P 0521, I assume this is, okay, non-discrimination as recommended by the Policy Committee.
Yes. This is a revision to update the coordinator, specifically the Director of Special Education, who would be the Title IX coordinator. We're removing names so that it's always clear who to contact in the case that we need to reach out to someone. So we put the title up.
Right. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you. P 4000.1, regarding prohibition of sex discrimination, sexual harassment in the workplace as recommended by the Policy Committee.
This change was for the same reason, the coordinator and contact information will direct them to the Director of Special Education.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you. P 3171.1, non-lapsing education fund as recommended by the Policy Committee.
This is just new legislation that authorizes the Board of Education rather than intending to make these deposits into the 2% fund.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you. P 4152.6, Family and Medical Leave Act is recommended by the Policy Committee.
These are revisions to align with legislative changes for non-certified staff. The hour requirement, requirement to qualify for FMLA was reduced from 1,250 hours to 950 hours during the previous 12 months.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any extensions, hearing none, thank you. P 5144, Student Discipline as Recommended by the Policy Committee.
This change is statutory. In-school suspension cannot be more, for more than five consecutive days, it used to be 10. Students in preschool to grade two could be out of school suspended for conduct on school grounds that was of violent or sexual nature that endangers persons. This act adds that it must be behavior that causes physical harm. Also reduces the maximum length of out-of-school suspension for students in grades preschool to two, from 10 to five days. Students cannot be expelled without a formal hearing, and a notice of the expulsion hearing must be sent at least five business days prior to the hearing. So this act clarifies that the five business days does not include the specific day of the hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, how does that affect, I know we use those 10 days to get everything in line for an expulsion hearing.
Correct.
Are we going to have, because it's tough to find, you know, we need three board members minimum for it. Does this mean we might have to go and start looking at an expulsion officer?
That could be an option, for sure. Well, we... What we've done, hopefully we don't even have to worry about expulsions, right? But we do begin the process right away with a letter that is sent home for suspensions. We let them know, parents immediately, that it's being referred for possible expulsion. So they get the notice immediately. Administrators also inform the parents that, again, it may not happen. And we've used that language and have to, you know, took it back, but at least it starts the process. Yes, to ensure that we have three board members present, if that isn't possible, we do already have a, an officer that we could use for that, that we use for residency hearings in the past.
Any other discussion? I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any extensions, hearing none, thank you. P six one five nine point one, paraprofessionals as recommended by the Policy Committee.
This revision is to update the policy to align with state statute revising the term paraprofessional to paraprofessional.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you. P six zero zero one, circus animals, therapy dogs as recommended by the Policy Committee.
This is a policy that we did not have on file and this will just allow us to have therapy dogs come in and visit our schools as long as they meet very specific criteria.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Discussion? Anything you'd like to say about that too, in terms of, about this?
About the therapy and?
Right.
No, it's, the, the, the training, the certification required is pretty, is pretty strong. I mean, it's, it's, hopefully we'll take some of the liability away from the school. But I think it's a, it's a good policy to have in place.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, hearing none, thank you. P five one three one point six, alcohol use, drugs and tobacco, including performance-enhancing substances.
This plan or policy complements our school discipline policy mentioned earlier, which is policy five one four four. This policy governs student conduct regarding alcohol, drugs and tobacco. We are just aligning the two policies, which changes in the laws around cannabis specifically.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. Where it says enhancing substances, are we, is that steroid use?
Yes.
So, so that would fall under the academics policy as well? Is that in the, is that in the act?
Or sports, athletic? Oh, so yeah, I see.
It's embedded. We may have to look at what this policy's saying and make sure it aligns correctly with the new policy, but we do have that embedded in our athletic camp.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, hearing none, thank you. Consideration and action to authorize the use of 49,082.55 from the non-lapsing education fund for the purpose of purchasing Tyler financial software. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussions, superintendent, you want to backfill us, please?
The current quote is, again, for Tyler Technologies, for that financial software that will, are closer to 21st century technology. The annual subscription is just over $60,000. There's the implementation cost of around $12,000 for a total of 72,753. We will receive a credit at this time of just under 24,000, leaving us as of today with a total cost of 49,082.55. So that's how we came up with that number. But this is, thank you very much, this is a great resource to use, particularly as we get on work with a new director.
Any discussion?
Nick, do you have anything to add?
No, the link, the, this price is good for Nick, a goal I date of May first. So if there's, if we're off by a day or two, the numbers will fluctuate a little bit because the credit is based off of how many days we're on the whole system. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Well, sit tight, because if it gets approved, you got to work tomorrow.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you very much. Okay, number nine, information items. Committee liaison reports. Dr. Grove?
Well, I think we've covered all of our policies for today and just a week.
Okay, thank you. Education evaluation?
No meeting.
Communications committee?
No meeting.
Thank you. Mottville Education Foundation? Carol's not here. Learn?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Cave and NSBA, Carol's not here. Mottville Youth Services Bureau, Tim's not here. Student board representatives. Tiana, please.
Today, I don't have a lot to report, but things at MHS have still been running quite smoothly. At this time, just spring sports teams are getting ready to start their new seasons and everyone else is, you know, waiting for, for, first day of spring and for good weather. But some exciting news that I have is that I believe on Friday, we have senior Enzo Valenti and juniors Hannah Suarez and Cameron Plakis, who are going to compete at the Adidas Nationals for track, which is very exciting because they've all worked very hard during the indoor season. And then another thing that I have is a new club was started at MHS, which is, it's a philosophy club, which is being run by junior Nathan Simon. And I believe the club is set to start on March 20th. What I think was really exciting about the club is that it's being held during the lunch, lunch block rather than being after school, which I think is really productive because not a lot of students are able to stay after school to attend clubs, like because of transportation purposes. But I think that it's really nice that the club will run during lunch. So I feel like that gives students more of an opportunity to be able to attend. Also, what's interesting about the club is that it's open to both staff and students, which I think is a great opportunity for there to be more of a connection with teachers and students and them to be able to share and express their thoughts and opinions on topics like philosophy. So I'm very excited to see how the club takes off and how it will progress over the rest of the school year.
Thank you. Where, where is this competition being held?
I, for junior, I want to say.
For junior, please.
Thank you. Alex?
So I'll start off saying, earlier today, our FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America, sent a handful of students to a competition among other FBLA clubs in the area. One of the projects they presented was a video made by two students about the importance of tourism in our community. So they made a project, and I'm meeting a son. And I just got word from them, 30 minutes before the meeting started, that they won fifth place out of eight, which actually got them an award. But as far as I know, I think they're the only ones that got an award. There were a couple other projects, like a mock job interview, a social media account that were presented as well. The National Art Honor Society went to the Yom Nizhomo Art a few weeks ago and got a guided tour, where we did a couple activities analyzing some of the pieces. That was a really enjoyable opportunity to get to interact with some art. And Mr. Richmond's ECE class will also be going later this March, so I'll be going two times in the span of about a month. And the last thing I have is the drama department's spring production will be performed in April 3rd to 5th. The name of it is A Life Well That Only A Mother Could Love, and it's actually entirely student-written. And one of Mr. Richmond's daughter, Holly Richmond, who's also a model high school alumni, is also collaborating on the production of the play. And talking to Miss Walsh about it, they seem very excited about students having a bigger role in the writing and production part of it.
That sounds really nice. Thank you. Principal?
I'll start. As you heard me give, bring us back the award from Loma Marbles, I just wanted to officially announce that the Reader's Program kicked off in all three elementary schools. And this is a nonprofit organization that raises money and they donate a bike for a boy and a girl in every grade located too, and then a hundred dollar gift certificate to DIPS with the idea of, you know, grow your mind and get kids involved activity as well. And they started it in Norway, which brought it over to Loma, and I believe they said they brought it to another town this year. So I mean, they're, they're raising tens of thousands of dollars to drive these bikes to our students. And so that kicked off about three weeks ago. So kids are reading and really, it's nice to see this program continue. And I just wanted to mention at Oakdale, we also started a Girls on the Run program, which I think maybe Tyler did in the fall. A mother approached me and asked if she could use Oakdale as a site for the program. So we have 15 girls and they meet twice a week and they, they get lessons in, you know, empowerment and confidence and they go out and they run. And the end of the program, they'll, they'll raise a five K the other routine. So it's pretty exciting.
At Murphy School, the hatchery is opening. I don't know if you remember last year, but we have chickens coming. And there's a countdown on the art room door and it's in the art room, which is great because all the kids move through and get really excited. And then when the chicks do start to hatch, we livestream it, like so that there's a camera so that the kids can, throughout the day, and the teachers will pause and, you know what? So it's, it's excellent and I'm really excited, so.
And over at Mohegan, our after-school academic support program is coming to a close right before vacation. It has 24 students in this grant-funded program, grades three, four and five, focusing on ELA and math, with the hopes that we see improved, smarter balance scores.
Tyler, last week, the student council members visited the senior center and participated in a variety of activities with the seniors. Our NJ, our National Junior Honor Society team is looking to join with the community to support community enhancement projects. So Tyler getting involved in Mottville community is a good thing. And then Newsies, our drama production, Newsies is happening on March 27th to 28th at 6:30 PM. If anyone's interested, you can let Dr. Mubak know or me know and I can get you guys tickets and be all set to attend if you want to attend. But we have the most amount of students participating in this production than we've ever had before. So they created some new roles for some students surprises and stuff, so everyone's really excited about it.
At the high school, we're happy to announce that on April 25th, we'll be hosting the ECC Unified Prom. This was an event that kind of rotates from school to school. There was a little bit of a lack of communication this year with this, with this opportunity or this experience was almost missed out. But talking with Amanda, Brian and Ken, we kind of came to the table late last week, early, well, late last week, and decided to take this on. We've had tremendous, been received really well amongst our staff and there's a, there's a great buzz about this. So April 25th, we'll host the ECC Unified Prom here.
How many people are you expecting for that?
We're inviting 11 schools.
I have a question. I can remember sending a video the other day of AI and where we're going with that type of thing. Then it made me think, is that in our school system?
In, I'm sorry, AI?
Is that in our curriculum? Like, I don't need to do stuff to kids. Like, how do we get them interested in wanting to maybe code and then, because it says that there's going to be a huge need for some people to work with businesses, incorporate AI in that technology. So how, is there any way we can think or, when you go to conferences, is there any way that schools are teaching kids or teaching them, letting them know what's out there, what they need to do, how they need to do? You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, some of our tech ed classes that we currently run have been working with those coding programs and, you know, curriculum around that. For years now, we are struggling to keep up with AI. So the first thing we're trying to do is educate ourselves and then try to find that balance of using it productively and responsibly as opposed to using it inappropriately or unethically. That's finding that balance and then transferring that to our students to use as it's intended, not to be manipulated and kind of, you know, shortchange or use it as a shortcut to complete work.
We talk about, we talk about cell phones, but in 10 years, they say kids won't even take out a cell phone. There's going to be a hub. They'll be in their pocketbooks, so they'll be, they're going to act as a hub. We will never touch anything. We will never, it's, I just want, I don't know how we do it, but how do we prepare them?
Last year, we had Matt Mervis come in, who's like a renowned AI person in the state. He's presenting at Wordford High. And we sent that out as, the district sent that out as just for parent community to go and see. And his present, he presented to our teachers at Tyler, I think he did other schools as well, just talking with teachers about how to effectively utilize AI in the classroom and then how to look out for things. Nick and I were just talking this evening about, you know, students that are, that are abusing it and then programs that we have to help identify that and then work with students to, you know, work around that. So, I mean, it's, it's a new technology, but it's not, I mean, it's now, you know, it happens so fast that it's out there. So there are a lot, there are resources and there, there is professional learning on it and the students are using it, even the middle school students are using it, not mostly effectively, but they're, they're using it. And I think the way that Matt Mervis presented it was like there, it's, it could be such a tool for students. He talked specifically about like his kids that are in college and how they're using it. I mean, it's pretty like remarkable, like kids will write, they'll write, say there's a five paragraph essay, they'll write a four paragraph essay and then they're stumped for their conclusion so they can input the four paragraph essay and it can help them guide with, based on what they wrote to write their conclusion and help them with it. So there's ways that it can be very useful and, yeah, we have to kind of zone in on that for sure in the classroom.
I've, I've heard Matt Mervis three times and it's just been amazing and he's, keeps current with it and we are looking to bring him back. And we have a working relationship with him in this district. He's helped facilitate our work with the PIP classes. So like I said, we have a real good working relationship with him. He speaks at Ken and I's roundtables as well.
Are there any speakers that can speak to kids about it? Like a, you know, assembly, I don't know what they call it, probably old school, I don't know what they call them now, but I don't know, is there anybody out there that can come and talk to kids in the school? I don't know, just plant the seed and what, what it's like for them in 10 years and how can they get involved in it? How can they be part of it?
Like, the seed is planted at elementary school. I mean, they're coding right down into kindergarten in their library media classes. So it's, the seed is planted, it's going to be a matter of what Robert's saying, can we keep up with it? You know, like can our iPad support the program that the kindergartners are using to code when, you know, like technology just keeps replacing itself, so. It's just a challenge.
It's going to be amazing. Thank you.
Assistant superintendent?
Okay. This month, we began training our crisis team staffs at the school level in de-escalation strategies and crisis management using a new program, if you will, called Safety Care. This training will replace the previous crisis management program handled with care. We used grant funding to send four staff members to become certified as safety care trainers and these staff members are able to turnkey this information to our district going forward. Two of our trainers, along with our VCBA, have already trained 21 staff members and administrators. We have heard a lot of feedback from those who were trained, some are here tonight. They indicated that they are feeling much more confident in de-escalation strategies as well as the crisis management of students itself. And we are fortunate now to have in-district trainers who will continue to train our crisis teams in the district wide and we are thrilled to be able to provide this level of support to our staff and our administrators going forward.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Yes. And I just want to piggyback off what Andrea shared. A lot of that work was guided by our new VCBA and she did an amazing job with that. I'm really pleased with her work. So it's been, as you hear, a very busy time in the district. I know that this year, we shared with you the new teacher and leader evaluation plan at the beginning of the year. I just wanted to share with you, we're beyond our mid-year point, so all certified staff, whether a teacher We're beyond our mid-year point, so all certified staff, whether a teacher or leader, has met for their mid-year evaluations, and, you know, we're moving forward with that. I just wanted to share that. And today, I asked our social workers and school psychologists at all our schools to attend a webinar called Why We Didn't Tell You, which was a conversation about suicide by a group of persons with lived experiences of suicidal thoughts from all walks of life throughout the lifespan. I really wanted our mental health team to attend as it was an opportunity to, to ensure that our team is staying on top of current new and emerging practices regarding suicide, which unfortunately is on the rise in Connecticut and elsewhere, particularly amongst teens. So this just enables us to stay on top of prevention, intervention, and community resources to help struggling students.
Thank you. Citizens' comments? Citizens' comments? No citizens. Any citizens' comments? Alright, thank you. Board Chair, remarks, we'll start with you tonight, please. Lisa? Bob?
Nothing.
Donna? Tina?
I really want to say thank you again for the puzzle there. That was an amazing idea. I appreciate it. Anyone, everyone that is involved in that, thank you.
I'm going to thank you also for that. That's very thoughtful, very considerate, and quite heartfelt by somebody who doesn't. I see a lot of that. I appreciate that very much. It was very nice and kind of all of you to do that. I would like to say that we would like to have Superintendent inform me that we need to have an executive session next Wednesday with our Board of Attorney. Some client attorney issue that needs to be addressed, meeting is going to be at five o'clock. Our attorney will be here on the twenty-sixth, next Wednesday. I would greatly appreciate it if you're all there. Anytime we have a board attorney there, I think we should, should be there. Outside of that, I have no other comments. Any future agenda items? I think we talked about a number of things tonight, really important. I like the idea of sending back our agenda for a little cleanup, revision, get it remodeled. I like that idea very much. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I'm looking forward to the drama production. So I'm in favor. And that's all I have. And we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, thank you.